Good evening and welcome to our Covington City Council Special Meeting. We are here for Tuesday, November twenty-second. This special meeting is being held in person and virtually telephonically. With that, we'll call the study session to order, and Chris, if you'd like to call the roll.
Councilmember Soltis.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartsock.
Here.
Councilmember Harthausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith. Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
Your Honor.
Thank you, and we don't need to excuse Sean since this is a study session. With that, we have one item for discussion tonight, and that is the strategic planning process, and I'll turn that over to our city manager, Regan Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here, everyone. I did talk to Sean Lo earlier today, and he's hopeful to be able to join this meeting. So he's down in California with them. So as you know, we did hold a meeting, I think the last time we did this was end of September, and so we got through two of our four strategic priorities. So tonight, we'll pick up on strategic priority number three. Once we have the action items from council developed for the priority three and four, staff will go back, review those, refine them a little bit. There might be some things we add in, some additional ones that then we'll bring back to council and continue that discussion for eventual approval of our new strategic plan. So with that, Selena, you're able to share that up there, and we'll start going on this. The next strategic priority is number three, a commitment to health and safety. The objective statement that council chose is grow Covington as a community where people are safe, live an active life, engage in the community, and have access to city and all have access to city and all have, I think we need to fix that. And all have access to city and social resources. We'll edit that.
Yeah, I'll make sure. I'll double check that. Sorry.
It's like, is that really what we came, our final?
We're thinking and all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, what I printed.
Oh, no. This is from September. This is the one. I'll double check. I thought it actually was.
We'll confirm. We've got it on.
Bottom, actually. For number three?
Yeah.
So here it is. Grow Covington as a community where people are safe, live an active life, engaged in the community, and all have access to city.
That's it. We just haven't added to that.
I'm gonna do that right now.
So as we go through these and creating these action items, ask yourself, would you come up with them as, how would we measure that? How do we measure if we've accomplished that action item? Because this is really where we get into the nuts and bolts of, okay, this is the action item, and this is how we know we accomplished it. So with that, we can just start opening it up. Selena will type them up there, and there's a disclaimer. We can't make kind of Selena's typing. So that's, yeah.
No selling, no grammar.
Can't do that. But we'll, we'll fix it. We will fix it. So, yeah, we'll just open it up to the room now, Mayor, if that's okay, and anyone can throw up anything, yeah.
A couple solicit and provide updates to council from local human service organizations so we can monitor food insecurity, homelessness, et cetera.
That's a, that's a great one. Any further development or thoughts on that item?
I have one very similar to that, but it's actually on number four. So when we get there, obviously.
Okay.
And I have one more. Coordinate events that get folks outside, like neighborhood walking events, police officers, council members, karma.
Can you see the beginning of it again? I didn't hear.
Coordinate events that get folks outside, like neighborhood walking events with police officers, council members, karma. Not that karma probably walks very far.
Karma has trouble walking very far. Um, Jennifer, on that first one you mentioned, the human service organizations, are you thinking of the ones that we fund, those ones?
I am, and it doesn't have to be those, but it would likely be those.
Like Valley Cities maybe too, because they're providing some.
Yeah, because they should have a pulse, and it would be interesting because we could use the information and compare it and see if things are getting better or worse.
So maybe any human service provider that's working within the community are funded by something like that. Good. Thank you, Jennifer. Any other thoughts on this one?
On, on that particular item or on?
On this priority.
Okay, I have, have a couple questions. And I was looking at this and thinking about social services and engaging the community. How are we engaging our seniors? So I wrote, develop a quarterly event for seniors to share safety information, overview of parks and recreation activities, provide guest speakers, and resource foods. I don't know how much our seniors are attending the resource events because their needs are going to be different than their, well, they do have the food and security, but they're not looking for childcare. Julie have the medical dental covered. So I think that that's measurable.
Sorry, I was trying to capture, for parks and rec resources, and you have a third.
Guest speakers.
Guest speaker.
And, and resource food.
Debbie, when you suggested that they're not attending the resource event, were you talking about our new monthly one that we're doing?
I don't know the numbers, actually, but I looked at the types of services that are being represented by that event, and domestic violence certainly could apply to, to the seniors and the food insecurity.
Yeah, there's.
But the others, yes, find Maple Place, and some of the others are more directed.
Well, and, and it's a good thought, because I don't know that we've really expanded that into our senior community. I don't think that was the lens in which those were developed, so we could expand that.
I'll just say that I believe we had five people participate in the event in November. The idea now from Julie is to rotate with the senior center and, or sorry, she keeps saying senior center, but a different senior apartments and other apartment.
It said this would be a good venue, right, venue, I actually, event, because venue I don't know yet or we just pulled it, but to get seniors from different, we've got all the different senior housing available, and then we've got seniors out in, into the other developments, but where they've got a place to gather, where it's directed for them, speakers to talk about. At this time of year, could be talking about the enrollment that you call, officials for that, you know, the Medicaid insurance or Medicare insurance. And then the other one was to hold a biannual open house similar to the, the Let's Talk Public Safety, but targeted towards the HOA liaisons that we know of. I know Krista has a list. And apartment managers, senior living complex managers, we've got that audience to discuss crime trends, the importance of neighborhood watch programs. So I think we tried with the neighborhood, neighborhood night out to talk about neighborhood watch programs. But we still get a lot of complaints directed back at what is the city doing about crime and what are, what are the police doing about crime? So this is more around safety and how we can teach our HOAs and the other complexes. So we've got apartments with apartment managers that may have a liaison or be a liaison, and then the senior housing managers. Get that group together to talk about how do, how do we teach everyone about neighbor, the importance of neighborhood watch?
Yeah.
Because you've got eyes on your neighbors, but the police can't have eyes on all neighborhoods.
Are you thinking with that, Debbie, it's something like we do with the street meetings where we go out to them and do it, or something where we invite everybody to do it?
We could do either. I kind of thought about this being like the open houses that we held here, but targeting those specific liaisons that would cover those different areas. But doing it out in, maybe rotating around the community.
How many of the HOAs are doing their annual meetings in person versus on Zoom these days?
I don't, I don't know that. I, I know the meeting Beth and Debbie and I attended the other day was virtual, so I, I think it's probably a pretty good mix. Yeah, I, I think they're partly right, yeah. I, I think there's obviously some logistical issues with that, that, that many different entities to do them all separately. We, we need to really divide and conquer, and, and you know, that would be thirteen to fifteen HOAs and several apartment complexes and whatnot. So that, that would be a lot of work that we can do, but.
I was envisioning this being getting them all together.
Okay.
Yeah, not separately, but you know, it's many HOAs that we could get represented.
Get some invitations out to everybody.
Yeah, get relationships with the apartment managers and senior manager.
So maybe, maybe increase social media presence of our positive public safety. I, I know we push out quite a bit of what our police are doing, but there's, you know. I, I think Carla would be hesitant to have a scheduled post, just because she tailors those to what posts are coming up and what trends are happening and things like that. But, but at least like increase social media presence in, in a positive way. If that works.
I mean, I guess, I kind of thought of it in a way, or look, if you have a watch the statistics, not just from an individual event.
And specific to public safety.
Yeah, like, well, I'm talking about like, hey, good luck to the, you know.
Each, each kind of big thing we do, like, you know, all our shopping emphasis as we do, certain rest, we, we put all that out. So I, I think. Well, not everything, because you know, they've got stuff happening all day, but. Yeah. Well, and, and tying it in with like the nine, nine P M. Routine, right? We used to push that out of where we are. So the, something like that is a, a good way to connect that to it, so if you mind including that.
Yeah, the nine P M. Check your mail.
Yeah, right, right. Well, it, it's amazing. Adam was just telling us the other day, just that people aren't doing these things, that things are going and just sliding windows open because they're not locked at night and going in and stealing stuff. Well, people are in their homes, right? It's happened a couple of times the last couple of weeks, and it's like, we need to remind people to lock their windows. So. So anyway.
I know we're already doing this, but you never know what the future may hold of leadership in organizations, so I would say continue to partner with the chamber and local health organizations such as MultiCare, Valley Medical and stuff for, like the Makers Market, the Health and Wellness Fair that was put on to help get more people in Covington to come to a community event. Because I, I know that both Valley, I know MultiCare was there. I don't believe that. I don't know if Valley was at the Makers Market or not, but getting them involved and keeping them there, that draws people to those organizations.
Yep.
I know at Kids Fest, they're involved, but.
But I, I think kind of building off that, there's some cool opportunity to really partner with MultiCare and Valley to do more around health and safety in the community, right? As opposed to, th- they're here and people are using them, but, but being really intentional about making sure people know what services they have available and things like that, so.
And MultiCare used to do that a lot, and Valley when they had, when like when Yukadamo was there and then.
Yeah, that really died off of Elon, so.
Yep, and then in the nineties, Valley was extremely involved in Covington days.
I, I think we're in a good position right now as a city to start those things. With CEDIS, we've, we've got MultiCare and Valley really involved and engaged in our new downtown association. We started working on there, both really excited to be involved in that, so I think that's a good stepping up point to do this as well.
That's good, yeah. I'd like to see them get more involved again.
I just want to point out, we did use that action item for strategic priority three, partner with Valley and MultiCare on healthy living campaign. So maybe we could.
Which, which priority are you on?
On number three, we could use.
Oh, I think you're reading the staff suggestions that we put.
Oh, okay. Well, won't we incorporate those?
Yeah, so, so what we'll do, we wanted to first get all of councils.
Okay.
And then we'll incorporate some of staffs and bring them back to.
Okay. Who provides the helmets? Is that Mary Bridge?
They have done that in the past. Do you recall who?
Kiwanis does also.
Yeah, I, I think that's a really great example, and that should keep happening. I mean, I know it was at Kids Fest again. I don't think it's going anywhere, but.
I think the, the time we do it is at Kids Fest.
Yeah, Kohl's has done it in the past as well.
The fire authority and Bicycle Rescue for you.
When I read that, when I read the objective statement, I also think of save, save waves, like, you know, we talked about like sidewalks.
Safe routes to school.
Safe routes.
There's too many.
Anyway, and so, I mean, I know it's sort of an infrastructure, less of a cultural thing, but I don't know if there's a place for that here where we might evaluate, like in my mind, and like maybe next year, we evaluate the gaps on, not every, we're going to get air sidewalks everywhere, but is there a way to complete a sidewalk or pass some beacons, like where that gap is and how much it will cost so that we can, when we're going to.
I think like a gap analysis on that is a good.
Yeah. And then the other thing that popped out to me, and it's, it's kind of mashed, it hasn't worked very well, but when I think that all have access to city and social resources, I, I would like to know where we're at with bridging that gap for people with, I'm thinking of inclusion, but I'm thinking of people with physical disabilities or, you know, are they, are they able to make it to one of these? And, you know, these are all really great, like open houses and things, but what if they don't drive or, you know, and how can we, how can we get those types of, that information to people who are not be able to?
Get here.
Get here? You know, we're talking about like, we're going to install rail, is there a need for people that may not be able to see or they can't hear? In addition to people of an economic disadvantage.
And we could potentially access some of them through like Meals on Wheels in churches. A lot of churches have programs to go to the homes of residents that need support either with meals or pastor visits or whatever, and just drop off and maybe even flip some paper that way to.
That's a cool idea to reach that demographic. Tap into the faith-based community and administering that's happening there with, and provide information. That was a lesson. Did you have any questions?
Yeah, and I'll be, we'll be coming back to you in January with some data of the population of folks that are disabled within the city and for different, so. And then I think one other thing that I also think about when I think about safety, again, sort of related to infrastructure and the sidewalk scenario is street lighting. And I know this was brought up with several larger communities that are older where we didn't really have any design standards in place, and they think of like hardwood right behind Walmart.
Before the city was incorporated.
Either before the city was incorporated or even as some, or right as, and so there wasn't really any kind of standard, and so.
Well, yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, we have the, the communities right behind Walmart, which is, I don't know, right off our downtown area, and there aren't any sidewalks and very little people. And it, it, I mean, it is expensive to use, so we'd have to figure out what that might look like, but.
So, so maybe this goes in with what we heard in Timberland Street meeting. We put an action item on here to, to assess how, how, or at least provide information to the neighborhoods that don't have adequate and safe sidewalks on how that can be accomplished.
All right, let's do street lighting too, because Wax Road and One Eightieth. Right, I mean, part of the portions of One Eightieth down past the old school, there's maybe one, two streetlights. I know when I go home tonight, there's going to be maybe a grand total of three, and those are all going to be right before Cresswell.
Right.
So.
Can you put on there, Selena, that we, we provide the information necessary to the specific neighborhoods with, with poorer walking routes? How sidewalks can be developed, and really that's the, uh, local improvement of district.
So something I'll just kind of add here, over the next two years, as we're going through our comprehensive planning process, one of the requirements is that you have to have an equity lens applied to your program, right? So everything that we do, and I might have mentioned this before, I can't remember, it's the planning commissioner with the council, so I apologize if you've heard this one. So something that we're going to be doing as part of our climate action grant is looking at our vulnerable neighborhoods, and part of that will also be creating an equity tool. The long game and what our ultimate outcome will be is that we will then have our capital program that comes out of our comp plan. We'll be able to apply this lens to that, and then ultimately be able to say, you know, this investment will reach this many people kind of on an equity scale to be able to start helping with decision-making. It will, it will also help folks that may need to go gay.
So is that, is that like a median income?
It's a whole, it's a whole range, not just income, it's equity as far as your ability, you know, for able-bodied, disabled bodies. If, if there's, there's, I, I'm not a, an expert in this, but there's about three or four different toolkits that are already kind of being used nationally. So we'll be kind of looking through those and figuring out which one that we use, but it'll be like a measuring system that we would apply to decision-making within equity. No, that's something we're doing. It's part of our comprehensive planning and a part of our climate. So you guys, so the council and the planning commission, you guys will probably start to see some of this information rolling out mid next year. And we have to finish the vulnerability, the kind of vulnerability assessment by June of 2023. So definitely by then, we'll have some type of equity tool, then that equity tool rolls into our comprehensive planning to help inform these types of decisions.
Where does the data come from?
Yes, in the ACS.
I mean, I just, I kind of feel like with a, well, I mean, I know we have, there's lots of really good reasons to look at it through that lens. And I also just even think of our city footprint and like what our downtown or key areas are, and, and I'm thinking of like, where's the, where's the, where are the dark places? Like if you were photograph it at night, where are the areas where there aren't, you know, I mean, and it kind of just is a practical, just from a practicality standpoint. But then maybe from there.
Yeah, and I think all of that, you've got to start with that data, and then you can be able to assess that data. So I think this is the great goal or action item. I'm just sharing that because these themes are starting to emerge, right? You have these kind of things of where do we have gaps? How then do we make decisions on those gaps, right? And then how do we inform our, our, you know, the folks in our cities of how they can anticipate. So I just wanted to share, because it's, it's kind of really much aligns with a lot of the work that's.
I don't know that we need that information to create these. Yeah, I, I don't, uh, these can overlap with that, but I don't think we need those before we decide.
And remember, this is a five-year plan. We're not doing everything in year one, right? Like.
Please don't make a city.
Mention that, these things, right?
Yeah.
All of it, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Strategic plan.
Five-year plan. So as we, as we strategize, right, when we do things, we're only going to get smarter, right? And then all these, all the work that we did through the pros plan, through the comp planning, through how it works.
And we reevaluated this.
Yeah, it all dovetails.
So let me ask, so the objective is to grow Covington as a community where people are safe, live an active life, engage in community, and have access to social resources. We were, I think we've hit on a lot of those. What about the active life, right? Maybe the same, safer routes is part of that. Anything else in that regard?
I really love the people walking loose. I don't know what that means or looks like. Do you attract positive things? Do you attract crime in the same, are good people that walk, tell me this.
No, I, I don't, I don't think that attracts crime, but, and, and I think there, there are some, you know, where you might put some wayfinding signs and mark out mileage so people know how far they're walking. Things like that, yeah.
Well, if you put a point two miles, I'm going to be looking for the, for, for sure, one hundred percent. It's like, it's almost, almost totally new to me to want to achieve that, so.
Yeah.
Great idea.
Yeah, okay.
I added link I need to that strategy about gap analysis on walking, save school, non-motorized routes.
So my thought on an active life is to continue to strategize, define funding, build a new aquatic center slash community center, which would help engage, get that. I mean, I know that's something that most likely is not going to happen in five years. It could be. We could have somebody move in and just want to give us money.
Sure, there's a.
A couple hundred million would be nice, you know? You know, but it would be nice to be able to continue to find that.
Yeah.
Because if we have a full, the full build out of what we suggested from our, the meetings, it would definitely go a long way.
I, I did like the idea of kind of downtown.
I mean, it had it separately.
Yeah, just, I don't know, whether it's separate with combined therapy is fine. Just so we have that, because I, I think we, we want our downtown to be walkable and so we help create in the spaces that way.
So I do have a question about what the, the suggested list from staff, because it said that some of them are things we're already doing, which we know we are, and some might be a priority from staff. And I know it talked about develop a special water safety program targeting vulnerable, vulnerable populations. Is that something that we're already doing? Like, I mean, I like the idea of being able to support people in that because it is important.
So we just teach swim lessons. The, the, I don't know that we have a specific thing like this that we've been having.
Oh, okay. I guess I figured it would be like a grant where kids, families that can't afford it.
Or develop a special water safety program targeting vulnerable populations. We, we could fund it through a grant, or we just charge, right?
Well, how are you, probably one category, is it, set aside a certain amount of money that we can.
There was one action item that I read, and I can't remember if it was one or two, but where it talked about funding some people within, in a building to pay.
Yeah, that was up a little bit too, I think.
Okay. Yeah, with the Valley and MultiCare.
I would also, I would also like to expand that though, because I think one of the things that gets a lot of people in a people around here is cold water shock. It's not enough to know how to swim. People are drowning that were very good swimmers because they just went, oh, it's a hot day. I'm going to jump in, and next thing you know, right? So I, I know that it's hard to do in a pool, but maybe, maybe there's ways to stimulate, simulate that experience or going to having some other kind of an event that we can host, because that's really important around. That's really important around. But anyway, that's.
Any other thoughts on this priority before we move on to the fourth one?
I I I do want to just clarify really quick because I want to make sure we have the objective statement we have here and for Covington of the community where people are safe, with an active life, engaging community and all have access to social resources. That was the final decision, so I want to make sure grammatically stay in there or maybe we can come back to this at the end. Okay. Back to this, I just want to make sure that like this, this is what was decided.
Well, people, people are safe, live an active life, engaged in, so the R is.
That, yeah.
Because it's not R though.
Right. So maybe we can get through action four so we get action items and then we can try to wordsmith this.
Strategic priority number four. Exceptional city services, the objective statement uh is provide Washington's best municipal services through visible and engaged city council, the sponsored staff and resources to meet the community's needs.
Well, if I could follow suit on Jennifer's um item under priority three, where we talked about the service event. So the only thing, and this could be three or four because they they're closely tied, but it's to do a review of are we providing, are we putting out the right services and are we holding them at the right places? Um, I I had heard that there the lack of attendance is becoming a little bit apparent or are not. Attendance at the events is kind of dwindling. And some provider booths are like, are not getting visited. So, okay, I'm talking about a storehouse, that's like, who else would I do this for?
As as far as city events, I I think kind of relates.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about the resource event. It, well, it is.
We've done it twice and I think the expectation was never that that would be a huge attendance. That that it's there for when people. Right, um, so, yeah, that that that's a hard one if you gauge success by attendance.
But if we gauge it by the fact that we are regularly reviewing, and maybe they are already doing this, I don't know, but are are, do we have the right providers there? Are we missing any providers? Do we have providers there that aren't getting any hits? And are we at the right location? So I heard that we are moving it next time to Polaris. And um so that's good, I think at least if we're all cognizant that maybe, maybe a different location will help and then maybe if we've got a provider there that isn't getting any hits, maybe they can rotate off, but we need. So my only thought was that we we do a uh a regularly scheduled review of the resource event to determine best location and service providers. But it it really could go back to Jennifer's. As long as we are agreeing that we're gonna regularly review it or that, or that human services will regularly review.
I think if it is specific to human ser- that human service event, it might best fit under priority three, but if it's more of a general, um let's review everything, all the services that we provide and assess whether they're still valuable or not. Um, programs or events. That that's a, that's a really good item.
Okay. And so it would help the city decide.
And and we went through that process in determining whether to continue with the outdoor movies and the midday um events that they had. And the midday events cost more and we had a hundred to a hundred fifty less people each. So we mixed that, right? And so I, that's a good process to go through. And and just to to let you know, that's a conversation we're having about sausage and cider. Well, that you're trying to assess whether that is. Just after the pandemic, it's hard to get cideries, get people back into it.
Is it, is it a salvageable event?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, especially with adding the kickball tournament next year, so.
Well, then perhaps my, my item, my action item is already being done and it's done by staff, so.
Yeah, but I, this is.
Yeah, I added it to three for that resource event of the T M goal. And then I added it for just city events, the right levels. I mean, I think there's a better way to say that. But the intent is to make sure that the, and that they're, that the events we're providing are meeting the needs of our citizens and that we're able to resource them and that they're value add, right?
And I would say and services.
Events, programs, services. Well, I I had an idea I was throwing out with Carlin, I, you Jennifer, I made sure with you and you said that Kent was doing something similar.
Drinks in the driveway.
I was thinking of a a host to council member and um a resident can sign up to host a council member and it's their responsibility to let their neighborhood know, I'll have a council member so and so here tonight, come ask some questions. That kind of thing, that's a pretty low barrier thing to organize. But uh, but yeah, or or we do more, more kind of larger thing and all the things.
Mayor, do that separately.
Uh, Jim? So I I know we did this once before and I I think it was successful at one of the schools and then another one just kind of blew us off, but I think we can work with them better is reaching out to the schools and having council members go and present things going on in the city, things that they could be involved with, you know, planning the of the city. So.
High schools?
Yeah, but going to the high schools, we could even, I mean, maybe the middle schools, maybe eight grade classes and so they can understand, hey, when I get to ninth grade, I can do these things, kind of prep them that way. But something where we can go out to the Max and then Cedar Heights for the grade classes and then Kentland and Kent Lake as well.
Do they teach like civics classes in that?
And I know like Ryan has taken a an A P uh world geography class. They discuss about how maps make, you know, how was certain things and I, it could be, you know.
I I would, I would go with Selena to that, to talk about, but I would, I would, I would, I would personally do most of the talking.
You were on council when we went to Kent Lake.
Well, yeah.
And Kentwood, but Kent Lake was the one really attended.
Because they excused a bunch of classes.
One of the things in a past life for a different city, we used to um use the schools to provide that outreach, so we would work with the teachers of civics and stuff and say, you can get at, your child can get extra credit if they come to this public meeting. Yeah, but it was so that the parents would, not just the kids. And so then you would have the parents and the kids at that certain open house or event or training. Passport to council meetings, I'm just saying.
You tend to certain amount, you get, yeah.
I I think pegging on to what everybody's talking about is I really like the idea of this um neighborhood leadership conference. Annual with HOAs. I mean, because I think that's other, like, when I think of an HOA, I would, in a very, very world, I would think that if you had five or six or seven HOAs and they all had five or six people showing up. You know, a different way like in person and then the first business is there too and it's not just.
I don't think we should limit it to HOAs. I know I keep saying faith-based organizations, but seriously, that's like, you grab a ton of people that are willing and.
I never hit this town HOA.
Right, but if if we can get neighborhood people finishing, like, I'm sure we all know somebody from every
The neighborhood busybody, right.
Anyway, my point is, is that, you know, it might be a good opportunity to actually have like, we thought this annual thing we're doing is it's not separate from National Night Out and it is driven more towards helping each other out, not just. I like that idea.
Neighborhood networking.
Yeah, something like that, we call whatever.
I have a couple, one is a plan to improve response and resolution to the Covington connects app. I know I have a, I feel like I have a different experience every time I use it, so I would love to see consistency. Um, I know just because my husband works for City in Newcastle, there, they had this target to pick zero. And I think it was this, this year, zero issues. So every day, they plow through that list. A lot of them are public works oriented, but it is a difference when you open the Newcastle one versus the Covington one, just take a look. Um, and then the other one, think about a volunteer coordinator position on staff. That's a great way to connect residents to the city, engage and identify leaders and future commission members. I know we've always said, you know, it's a lot of work to volunteer for, to coordinate volunteers, yes, I totally know, I spent like twenty years doing it. It, so it should be a staff person or a part-time or, you know, it it can't be another volunteer, right? It's, it's gotta be someone that is really engaged and going out there and connecting with people and wrangling them up and doing little trainings and um can connect with all the service groups, you know, because we have our main service groups and then that's.
Jennifer, yeah, so it that's one of Jennifer's responsibilities, but I think in the vein that you're talking about, she doesn't have the capacity to do, to to really do that, but she's coordinating like the adopt the street program and some volunteer projects, you know, that we put together, but not really that kind of uh issue, so.
Not as much out in the community.
Yeah, I I think if we took her, pulled her off the streets and clean up, she could, but I think it's gonna be at least a half, a T E time commitment to.
Yeah, and I, and I don't mean just cleanup stuff, I mean, just all, all kinds of things, it's really a way to identify any leaders in the community and get exponentially grow that, yeah. And be aware of where the high needs are, like, my Maple Place will often put out plugs of, you know, we need volunteers for this event or um food banks or any other uh nonprofit that's having an event or they need, I need someone every Monday night for food distribution. And so if that person were really keyed into what's happening in the community and they get calls, they can refer them out.
An idea might be, as we're talking about this, so uh, you know, Carla's still running um communications all by herself. And her and I have been talking about um adding some help there. This could be a good position for that part-time and the volunteer coordination part-time. That something maybe we could work in the next year's budget.
Now, a question about that. Um, so we'll kind of think about that role and we can dive into this more as we get a call. But would that also be, would you see this person also just evaluating like, but even how do you get volunteers?
Oh, for sure.
It would be a really proactive approach to volunteerism, we're right now, we're we're not, right? We we do a couple of service projects that we organize and then some of the service clubs do some.
Right, and you want to be able to pull, not just from kind of your usual.
And also like, like ego scalp projects, right? They'll come to us and uh we're trying to come up with ideas and.
There's also a a fair number of people that are looking for community service hours. So I know that like real life church gets calls all the time and they, they do place them to work in the garden and and around the church, but that's kind of a a separate, because you may have to kind of help that person track their.
Maybe planting those seeds, especially with the Covington connects, I think. I know we, we still have an opportunity to add enforcement in that area, because I know that there's a lot of things that are required by it every day, the ample homes and, you know, they all, they are. And it is hard to really follow up and do the right thing to kind of get those, move those, because we want to be fair, but at the same time, it also requires a lot of staff training to follow up. But it is a service that our community expects of us, if somebody's breaking the code. That that we take care of it, I mean, in in a reasonable time, right? Not necessarily tomorrow, but, you know, and we've heard it in different parts of the area and I think as we grow, we need to really go, it's not enough to say, well, we don't have, we need to get that something, someone in place.
Hopefully that, how old's Christine?
So, so Brian, I'll just back up real quick, Brian was operating at a half to earlier this year and then we hired Christine, so she's been with us, I can tell since June. And now Brian's transitioning full-time code compliance, Christine, so now we have to sort of scatter full-time there. People, as the stat Brian just gave, I think from your end is that they've reduced like um pieces by forty-five percent.
It'd be good to get an update on that.
I know, I was just thinking that.
On top of that, is there an action item?
No, no, I just. Right, I mean, maybe it's the goal, maybe there's a stat goal that like the size that might be bigger.
Good, these are great. Any other uh thoughts on this list, strategic priority?
Encourage, that was gentle. I mean, we can encourage and then. I I I just wanted to have one.
If if is council ready for that? So the question is, does, do we want to wordsmith that more than what we already have?
Everyone's afraid.
Here, I will, I will, I will add the few things I've heard.
What about if we said, would people safe and engaged in a community? Can live an active life and then we'll have that.
Grow Covington as a community where people are safe and engaged in the community.
An active life and all.
Can live an active life and all have access to the city.
It's just rearranging.
Yeah, just.
I, I'm wondering if, or grow Covington as a community where people are safe or.
Are safe.
Okay.
Grammar wants to change it to are engaged.
You want to know if speak more to you than the other?
Well, I think.
What's that, right?
I think we were getting hung up on the and all have access to city.
Oh, yeah. I think that's a good objective. You can put where all people.
Where all people are safe or, or on the bottom.
No, 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 all people.
Yeah, this was the. Those are it. Grow Covington as a community where all people are safe, live an active life, are in the community and have access to city and social resources. So this is it. Do we have community twice more? Too many times. So. Are engaged.
Are engaged and have access to city and social resources.
No, I, I think engaged in the communities, but I'm just wondering if that.
I'm just wondering if we should grow Covington. Grow Covington's a place where all people are safe, live an active life, are engaged, so. Well, this.
I'm not married to it. I just wondered if we could try to change one of those communities.
But you could say place or city. Place.
What if it's just grow Covington where all people?
Yeah.
I like.
I don't know. To me, that's a place to go, not. What the connotation for destiny.
Yeah, and destination, I think, speaks to something different than what this priority means.
I think we do. So, yeah, destination. So that's a general. It's far enough, like in the bottom one, it's.
Yeah, yeah, it's too good. Upstairs.
What, what if it's something like this? Grow Covington is a community where all people are safe, live, live an active life, I don't know, as you say, actively engaged.
I think you can use community twice because in the second sense you're saying and, um, are engaged in the community.
So, yeah, well, yeah, the second one I think is out, right?
So are we good with that?
I'm good with this.
At least, at least for now. So we need again?
Fine, it's fine.
Okay.